All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order at six. First item on the agenda is any adjustments to the agenda itself?
Yes.
All right.
I have one.
You go.
Request from Steve Murphy to talk about the library trustees.
Okay.
Do you want me to just go ahead and spit it out right now, the whole thing?
Uh, I think that that's, we can just decide where you want to put it.
Okay.
Does it matter?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, how about we do that? If you don't care, let's do it right after the, before the recovery officers' report. We'll try to be efficient and move through it. So Steve Murphy. And then Diana, you had something that you-
Yeah, I thought it would be nice to open the meeting with a little report on the town's operations during the exciting eclipse.
If we do that during public comment or right after?
We could do it right now, I don't care.
Let's just, I'd love to just knock these other things off if we can. Michael, are you okay doing that right after public comment?
We're good.
Okay, that's great. If there's no other, no objections, we'll make those adjustments to the agenda. Our first thing is to approve bills and payroll orders. I have to ask, is that supposed to be in motion or is that-
It could be in motion.
It is in motion.
Yeah, I figure we'll do approve the bills and payroll orders and we'll sign them.
So are you discussing?
Uh, I haven't looked at them yet, but no.
All right, so pending, uh, us looking at them, they'll be approved? All of those in favor?
Aye.
And then the minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 25th, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and minutes are approved. We sign the minutes too?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the back.
On the back. All right.
Yeah. And then we give them to Robin and she puts us on like very important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll ask if there's public comment, we don't seem to have anybody in the audience, but um, if there's no other comments, we can move to Michael and you're up there on the-
Sure, so um, the, with the eclipse, there became concern for Nichols Ledge, which is a nesting site for paragons. And then there was a, you know, I had planned on being there anyway, but then there was an email from a select board member, Karen Larson, from Cabot with concerns. And then I got involved, Diana got involved as kind of a town select board. And we worked out a program of closing off the roads up to the ledge on the Cabot side and on the Woodbury side. Alfie loaned some road closed signs that we put up on the Nichols Pond Road. And just briefly, you know, there were a few people that came up and most people that did come were fine with going somewhere else. There was one testy encounter at the last one, but that was resolved pretty quickly. So the paragons were totally oblivious to what was going on down there. It was a nice kind of Cabot-Woodbury collaboration.
Yeah, that was, yeah, the idea originally came from Cabot through Robin to Robin and then she passed it along.
Forgot that part.
No, I mean, I'm glad that Cabot thinks that that's an important place for them to protect too, even though it's in a little bit.
Well, the main road to it is from Cabot, so the town line is right there with the parking areas to the trailer.
Thanks for doing all that.
Yeah. Sure.
There are public comments. There are none, maybe we'll move to the town clerk's report.
I'm still the one who's recording as it comes in. I called Ashton Allen today, I haven't heard back from him yet, to find out if he's got a date when they're gonna start up so we can do that floor in the basement of the town hall office.
Oh.
Is Ashton Allen, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt, is that the heating?
No.
No, he's concrete.
He's concrete, okay.
And we've got some bids in for the mowing. And we have one bid in already for the mitigation, however you say that.
The local hazard mitigation plan?
Yep.
Oh, good.
But they still have more time on that one, right?
They have till the 18th.
Okay, and Jim and I did work in the office yesterday. We got out of there just in time because I paid, the traffic picked up at 1:30.
Really?
It did.
No kidding.
Did you get to watch the eclipse?
Yes.
That's good.
She has a t-shirt to prove it.
Other than that, I can't think of anything else.
So I thought this would be a good time, I stuck it in there, I have the information here, to talk about the heating system, it would be nice if we could get that in there before the floor gets done. But Robin, you probably already have copies, oh, you already have copies, okay. Copy, I sent this all to you, but just in case, you know, print it out. Who wants another copy? You want a copy?
And Diana, can I, and Lizzy, you and Lizzy can answer this question for me. The, the concrete in the big, the floor, can you remind me what, I went down, I just can't remember, what Ashton is doing?
Skin coating.
Skin coating.
Nice and level.
And you'd like that done before the heating system?
No, I thought it would be nice because the heating system guys said, at least the one, the one said they could do it, like now this is their slow season. And it would be nice if they, that mess could be done before the guy comes in and makes the floor all nice, but we've been waiting for the floor guy for a long time.
Well, that's because the plants are shut down.
Right, yeah, so um, I had sent you a while ago, these, well, this is, Lizzy, what does that say on it?
Which?
It says Robin.
Robin, okay, here, give me, because they have your name on them, so that makes it unimportant or something. Otherwise I'd get home and I'll say, I didn't give Lizzy hers. So anyways, a few weeks ago, I started looking into this, I had no idea how much it might cost because I was getting information from other places that was not correct. So we didn't think about going out for a bid because I just started calling people. And I didn't get a lot of response, Gillespie's came right over, a couple other places, I have notes somewhere that I called, they weren't really interested if we weren't already one of their customers. And then there was Lloyd's, I didn't expect to hear from them because the first time I talked to them, they said, well, we have to have a two-hour window with all of the decision makers there. And I said, well, that's not gonna happen. So they, they calmed down on that a little bit and they managed a one-acre window with Robin and I. I mean, one hour window. And then we got emails and calls, when could they meet with the select board? They just wanted to set up a meeting one afternoon a couple weeks ago and we said, no, that's not gonna happen. So finally they just gave me it in writing, they said, can't you just, so this is pretty amazing, the difference between these two. I think this Lloyd one, in this Lloyd one, they're recommending that, let's see, the first two are for gas and the second two are for oil. They're estimating that relining the chimney would be $4,216. The guy from Gillespie sort of threw out a number of maybe, what did he say, maybe $1,500 or something like that.
Right.
So in any case, the Lloyds came out way more than the Gillespie. And in each case, they gave us two different estimates, I think they were based on just a little bit different equipment that they would put in. Gillespie has been our fuel dealer for a number of years. Ever since Brandy started doing the bids every year, I think, they've been getting the bids. And they've done all our maintenance. And they just wanted a chance for us to look side by side, I don't know, I do better with paper myself, but when I saw these numbers, I said, wow. So, so the one question is, should we, should we move to gas? Which I think is probably a good idea because it, we won't have to line the chimney, gas is up and down as far as whether it's more expensive or less expensive. And it is cleaner and it is more efficient, but price-wise, yeah, it's, who knows? When it comes to petroleum products, hard to predict. So I did not invite Mr., what's his name from Lloyds, to come to our meeting just to tell us all the things that they would do. I mean, they want to charge us for guarantees, that seems weird. And also the Lloyd one doesn't, didn't include the change to the, the well, extra well connection connections. But that's separate here on this Gillespie one, $1,500.
So in Lloyd's first, or in their scope, the first one is just a slightly more efficient furnace?
Yeah.
Than the, than the second?
Well, it's 97%, 96%.
Versus 96%, yeah. I mean, that's, but that's presumably the only difference between these two.
Yeah, I tried to go through them word by word and, you know, there wasn't a lot, I mean, it's a different model furnace. One is modulating variable speed and one is single-stage variable speed.
And there's roughly not quite $3,000 difference between those two? Yeah.
Between one and two here, yeah. But either one, the first one is $21,000 and the second one is $17,000, that's not even considering the chimney part. And that compares with the Gillespie propane switch, which would be $9,000, $28.
I guess the only question I would have would be, how does, you know, Gillespie's Thermo Pride CLQS-1100 propane furnace compare to either one of these taken furnaces?
And would be, I think Lloyd's would be twice as good. I mean, not that I don't care about the building or the people working in it, but it is a little building and people working in it are like 18 hours a week, 18 hours a week. It's not like it's not somebody living there, so.
But the building is heated.
Is it, right?
It is heated.
Oh, yeah, it's heated, yeah, oh, yeah. Definitely.
And I'm sure Gillespie's would.
It's more about the longevity of the machine, what I would be looking at.
Mm-hmm, well, neither one of us talked about that at all.
Diane, are you looking to get an answer on this today or would it make sense for us to do a little bit of research on the options?
You know, I mean, the guy from Lloyd's would be, love to come and talk to us, but it's been hanging on for a while and I was always just hoping that we, maybe we could see, oh, it's ridiculous.
Not a comment really, just a question, have you looked into heat pumps where you could get both heating and cooling at the same time?
We would still have to have a heating system.
Well, I understand that.
Okay.
But have you looked into heat pumps where you could have both heating and cooling and done a cost comparison? Perhaps as a municipality, you could get a breakthrough efficiency Vermont in the cost, the overall installation cost.
Yeah, it's still very expensive and takes a lot of maintenance, I mean, that's the advice we got from one person who looked at it.
I think it would be worth looking into, along with some other stuff, too, energy upgrades, some window replacement.
Yeah, that's, that's totally different.
But if efficiency Vermont was coming up, you could look at all of that.
Efficiency Vermont has been to the building and has done an audit. It wasn't, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, they did a blower door and things like that. They, they recommended that they could pay for doing some blown-in foam on the walls of the basement. And they did recommend that they could pay for replacing that bulkhead door if we want to apply for and go through the problem. I think it's, I think they pay 75% up to $3,000 maybe, I don't remember the details, but.
So does it, does it make sense to, because I can, you have somebody you can ask, but I'm in, I'm in over my head in terms of like, oh, these units. Somebody we could ask, I'm sure. Would it make sense to just take that amount of time between now and the next meeting? To get that information?
I guess it's up to you.
What about, do you think Derek would be willing to weigh in on?
He might.
What do you think of that?
His family, though, so.
I'll just check when they, if you can tell me the difference between this furnace and that furnace.
Okay.
Yeah. And I can ask one of the guys at work too. We'll get as much information as we can. And then in terms of the heat pumps, is it?
That would be, I don't think, well, for one thing, this is being paid for by the insurance.
Yeah.
And whatever the insurance doesn't pay for, FEMA might pick up the difference, right?
FEMA would pick up the difference. The difference between your insurance and the final install cost for whatever you're doing to the building.
Anything you're doing to the building?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, so it doesn't have to just be replacement of what was locked in the flood?
If you're doing some sort of mitigation, you know, if any of this work is mitigation, like raising stuff off the floor, you know, your basement shelving or the heater, you know, up off the floor to mitigate the possibility of it flooding out again, anything like that would be picked up by FEMA. And as I'm learning, you can write for extensions on these projects as long as you have a good enough cause for those. And so there's no January 14th, 2025 drop dead date.
It's good to know.
Project completion. So if you wanted to take a month or so to investigate heat pumps or other types of heating and cooling, you know, you can do that and be somewhat assured that you're not gonna lose your place or Woodbury's not gonna lose their place in this project. And if we successfully do write for that extension, that will take the project down for another 30 months.
Oh.
So.
Can you say that, that thing again?
So the extension to the project, for this particular project for the town offices, if the extension is granted, then the project completion date would be 30 months out.
Well, it really shouldn't take that long to do this little bit of work, but it's good to know because the bridges up here, up on the hill here, are not gonna be able to get done by January of 2025. I doubt, at least.
Twenty, oh, that's, from a FEMA standpoint, there's no real need to rush and get this project done by January 25th. As long as we have, as we can explain satisfactorily to the state and to FEMA that we need this extension in time.
Is um-
I'm sure Lloyd's would be happy to spec out a heat pump first too.
The current heating system works, right?
Yeah.
At the moment, so there's no major.
Right.
There's no major rush. Thank you for doing this, I know it's a headache.
Yeah, I just thought it would be clear when you looked at the prices that one, the other one is ridiculous, but whatever.
For sure, as long as that is a, is a, is an equitable unit to one of these.
Well, equitable or not, a lot less.
Easy to ask that question.
I know, I think it would be worth, I know we had the efficiency Vermont audit and there were suggestions to improve the, the building as far as, you know, just holding in heat, et cetera. This mini grant that we're, be doing, I'm gonna be doing a more extensive audit for the town hall and there might be enough money in that to also include the town office. And I know that there's money from the state, from efficiency Vermont for, you know, upgrading and improving town buildings. So I think that, you know, if we did want to try to, I mean, the furnace, let's get it in there, but I think, you know, with the heat that that's gonna create, it would be good to have the building tighter. A heat pump would be great for working there in the summer, I remember select board meetings in that little room on a summer day when the sun was blasting in the window and.
I'm always gonna say, in the, in the, sorry, but in hopes of saving money, no matter whose it is, some good shades would be a whole lot better than what's there now as far as, you know, using the shades, the building's only open, used in the morning. Having some good dark shades and pulling them down when you leave the office in the afternoon. So if you were doing it at home, it would be a lot.
I use that building in the afternoon for FEMA meetings, so it does get warm in that room, yeah.
What?
I'm just indicating that.
There are other, other meetings that happen.
Oh, sure, yeah, and the, the reappraiser that we're gonna hire is gonna want an office space, so that's, but that won't be till like, at least a year from now, so I'm hoping that by that time the basement can be livable.
Diane, can I ask you a question? So in terms of insurance, because insurance is gonna cover part of this, will they only cover replacement or will they just cover the replacement of a, a heating system?
They would, they said that if you want to add, change anything, we just would have to pay the extra.
Okay, all right.
Because it would be a little, little more expensive to.
Doesn't seem crazy to at least investigate the, the ideas of heat pumps and the ability to cool, in my mind.
No, I agree, it doesn't mean we have to do it, it's, you know, we could at least just get the information.
Go for it.
Um, Michael, sorry, so you had said it sounded like there might be some money left over in the grant.
That's not gonna be, not something you can use for any hard stuff.
No, I get that, but to do an energy audit.
Like an auditor study sort of thing, that's what we, that's what we would be using that mini grant for.
Okay, here's a, there's the.
But there's, there is money available to help supplement the purchase of a heat pump.
So here's a memo from Matt Sharp of Efficiency Vermont back in August. He says, I have the original quotes from the energy auditor for the hall and the office. Let me know if you would like to discuss those buildings and your plans in more detail. When the time is right, town office, we can support the foundation spray foam and bulkhead door insulation and air sealing as well as the attic air sealing and adding more installation. This can happen all at once or in phases, the incentive would be 75% of project cost up to $5,000 when using the certified contractors. It is worth noting that by reducing the energy loss with weatherization, the heating system may have ample capacity to serve additional spaces not currently heated. This, I mean, he wrote this, well, this was after the flood, but it was, I think he was talking about, we had mentioned that we'd like to have more heat in the basement. So there's the added option of adding a ductless heat pump to serve the areas that don't currently have a heat source. So he said, I'm available to talk through different options that can be considered. At the town hall, we can support the same type of work as the office-like outline in the Fitzpatrick estimate with its own 75% up to $5,000. Depending on the scope of work you take on with this project, we can also advise in heating options and incentives that would help with a new heat pump system as well as heat recovery ventilation. If your project was large enough to justify that or if the, yeah, I don't think, anyways. So that's the letter from Efficiency Vermont.
I'll, I'm happy to take on, they're into heat pumps for sure. I'm happy to take on asking around, if I can get somebody to come look at the, at the space for heat pumps. And then I'll try to get the same guy to at least compare these two, these two furnaces.
Thank you.
Is there anything else in the town clerk's report or the heating system before we move out to the town treasurer's report?
Yeah, see, it's past April 1st now, they're sending out late notices for people that have not registered their dogs yet. So they'll be getting a nice little card in the mail and if it needs to have a rabies vaccination, they'll also state that on there. We only get a hundred and, a little over $150 registered.
Oh, we do have that many, oh, good.
About half of what we had last year, really?
Thanks, Robin. Brandy, the town treasurer's report?
Uh, the last two weeks took the taking in for income, cash receipts, $7,398.10. Delinquencies, $985.69. We had two direct deposits from the state, one was an equalization payment for $878 and the reappraisal payment of $7,463, increasing our reappraisal fund. Payroll the last two weeks, $10,359.1. AP, $23,204.26 and I transferred $15,000 today to cover bills.
Can I ask what the AP?
Towns payable?
Oh, towns payable, thank you.
Who opens them, you?
You know them?
Wow. This is some. This one here, it reminds me of an envelope that came through email.
Oh, okay.
He didn't read the instructions.
So you just wanna open one or?
Sure.
Or do I? I like the one that's already open.
Shall I begin?
Sure.
Dear Town Woodbury, this is on behalf of Five Seasons Land Works LLC, I would like to potentially welcome you as a new best of our, our business. We value your support and contribution to our business and we trust that your experience with our business will bring you the utmost satisfaction. My name is Kyle Chapin, the owner, operator of Five Seasons Land Works. I will be assisting you with all the necessary contract details and resources needed to effectively communicate with our business. Please feel free to contact me, blah, blah, blah. We are pleased to, we are committed to delivering responsive and excellent service to all our customers. And his proposal is for the town office, $50 a week. Park one and two, $50 a week. And the town hall and median strip, $50 a week. Additional work will be billed out at $60 per man hour with a minimum of two guys per hour. Total bid, $2,700, or $540 a month.
Am I the only one that's not quite adding that up right?
What?
I might have misunderstood, so 50 a week for those three items, but the 540 a month, is that for additional work or? work, or?
Uh, I haven't done the math. A hundred and fifty dollars a week times four is.
Six hundred.
Six hundred. So he said five forty, so maybe he's, I don't know.
And then there's twenty, he said twenty-seven hundred for the whole season?
Right. Oh, okay, if the season is paid in full, before the start date, there'll be fifteen percent off discount, which would be four hundred and five.
And that was what he's saying?
We can put the total grand amount for the season at two hundred and, two thousand two ninety-five.
For the season?
Two thousand two hundred ninety-five, if we pay upfront, he said.
And that, that's five seasons, is what?
Five seasons and land works.
And there's only three properties that?
Yeah.
And so this quote is for four properties?
Well, they, I mean, they said that the town hall and the median strip is one, is one, and the two parks is one, and the town office is one.
Okay. So these, so it's these three, right there?
I'm not sure about park one and two, I don't know if that is the same.
Town hall, park, and old store location?
What is park one and two, I'm actually not sure.
Park one is right here, right down next to the cabot row.
Yep.
And your park two is gonna be over closer to the new fire station.
Okay, so they're adjacent to each other, right, and want to touch each other?
Not, not quite, yeah, the yellow house is still there.
There's a house in the middle.
Yep, okay, got it.
And so that is, is that, yeah, that's.
So what have you got there?
That's that.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
I'm trying to compare apples to apples. This is seventy-five dollars per mowing for all town properties.
Okay.
And then there's a six hundred dollars.
Is this that one?
This is DR, property maintenance and law care, law care. And.
So seventy-five dollars for all, all the parks and the town office?
Uh, per location, I believe.
Okay, well, exactly what does it say?
DR property maintenance and law care will provide the highest quality care for four town properties for the Town Woodbury, seventy-five dollars per mow, no, I guess it's all town properties. Yeah, seventy-five dollars per mowing for all town properties.
Oh, okay. They're the ones that have been doing it for the last few years, along with the cemeteries.
And then there's a six hundred dollar, will provide a spring cleanup to all of the town properties for six hundred dollars.
What was the upfront cost for the Pisces and then those that discount?
Fifty dollars for the town office?
Just for the, just for the, if we, if the town were to pay upfront?
Twenty-five. No, upfront was twenty-two ninety-five.
That's what I did.
Right.
And that, I guess that would assume, did they, did they suggest how long, like how many mowings that would be?
I guess they're making the estimate, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if we could compare that to that, but.
I mean, it's nice to have some flexibility sometimes, because there are times, for example, the middle of August, might not want to mow every week, or in May, you might have to do extra, but, that it's hard for them to estimate based on those possibilities.
What's yours?
Well, that's you, I've got Tetro's outdoor maintenance out of Greensboro Bend, I have an insurance certificate, and it says, bid price, Woodbury Cemeteries, five hundred seventy-five dollars per mow.
Wait a minute, cemeteries?
Skip to the, to the town, not the.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Brandy. Uh, okay, four town properties, bid price, sixty dollars per mow and trim. Spring and fall cleanup, eighty dollars per hour. And then there's some phone numbers and address, and it's signed Mike Tetro, outdoor maintenance.
So, last year between the hall and, or between the office and the town parks, we paid one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Wow.
For those two combined.
So we were paying, oh, that's right, we were paying separately, even though the cemetery, we're using the same people, but.
And that was with DR? That was with DR?
Yeah.
Um, have we been happy with them?
The cemetery wasn't.
Okay.
Saying that's why they're going out.
The cleanup, he doesn't remove stuff.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Like, when they drop them, that was me picking them up every now and then, but, yeah. He doesn't haul any debris away.
So this one I have, doesn't really clarify whether it's sixty dollars per mow for all four properties, or whether it's sixty dollars each?
What does it say exactly?
It just says, four town properties, bid price, sixty dollars per mow and trim.
That seems clear to me.
Okay.
Must be wrong. I mean, I thought it was the same way.
I haven't seen the, the, the way the actual RFP went out, but I think it listed the properties that were to be mowed.
Okay, so you're thinking sixty's a lump for all four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, it looks like Five Seasons is fifty dollars per mow, or, yeah, per mow, I'm assuming.
Hundred and fifty dollars a week.
So it's one fifty per mow, because that's per mow for each of three locations. They are, they did break it down that way.
Yeah, okay, alright. So they're a hundred and fifty dollars per mow?
Yeah.
It'd be great if they all just did it the same way.
I know, right? It's one fifty, or seventy-five, or?
Or sixty.
Sixty.
And then when you do, when you divide that, like they, that spring cleanup, DR has it as six hundred dollars for the spring cleanup, and if you divide it by roughly eighty dollars per hour, so there, it's about eight hours, they're assuming it's about a day.
Okay.
So these guys are, I'm assuming, are also thinking it's about a day.
Okay.
Do any of those say how long they have been in business?
I don't think this one, I think that it is.
Did, now, the cemetery hasn't opened their bids yet, right?
Correct.
Would have been, so did some of these bid both cemetery and town?
Yes.
Should they all?
No.
So, I'm sorry, Brandy.
Well, not that I know of, because they're sealed bids, so they're just in, in the cemeteries.
You would only know if they had it on the envelope or something.
Can you use it? Explain again what, that DR did not pick up last year? Didn't pick up the grass, the trimmings, is that what?
Not the trimmings, like, branches that fall from the trees, cleanup in the cemeteries, leaf blowing.
Okay. But it was less of a problem at, for these town properties, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. My suggestion is that we continue with DR property maintenance. Five Seasons is significantly more expensive.
Tetro's is cheaper?
I know that the cheapest is always the best option, I don't know anything bad, though. I do know that they spelled mow with an E, which is, I don't mean to, I don't mean that judgy, but it's less professional looking than the other two.
I did hire Tetro's.
Doesn't mean they can't mow alone.
That is true, you're correct.
Just cause they can't stop.
Yeah, that's true.
I did hire Tetro's to do some work at my camp, probably four, five years ago, so they could.
I don't really have a strong opinion to, if.
I do know Tetro's did a walkthrough with the cemetery, wanting to know in detail, and for town properties, so, but.
Oh.
And DR already knew.
Right.
So, when are the cemetery commission, when is the cemetery commission gonna open their bids?
I have no clue.
So, but the deadline has passed, you think, and they're just waiting for?
I don't think they're in a rush.
No, what I mean, for the bids to come in. The date for the bids to come in. There are already some bids there.
Oh, yeah, there's a bunch.
Yeah, so, the bid date must have passed, it's just that the cemetery commission hasn't had their meeting yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So is there any benefit to us having coordination with the cemetery?
No.
No, okay.
I thought there might be, if so, if one of these people got the bid for the cemeteries, they might make a better deal for the town. That's not what we asked for, so I guess we can't expect that.
I don't have strong feelings, I mean, this is definitely less expensive.
And you can see it's insurance.
Yep, they have insurance. Do the others have a certificate of insurance? And we must know DR has it, because.
Yes.
Yeah, these Five Seasons people, I know they're doing a lot of advertising lately, I attempted to call them myself.
Diana, do you have a? Do you need one way or another?
No, I guess that, all things being equal, they have to mow, and DR has not been favored by the cemetery people, so maybe it would be nice to give the cheaper option another chance, a chance.
I'm, that we approve the bid from Tetro's?
I will, but I, I'm not seconding anymore.
Yeah, we're not seconding, well, we should have discussion, any discussion.
Okay, if we have a move, do we need a second? I'll second it.
We don't need a second, is there any discussion about it, though? No? All those in favor of approving Tetro's bid to mow four properties for the town, three properties for the town, please add?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, if you could pick up some of those, oh, now I guess you don't have to.
Do you want these?
Pick up all the branches out.
Yeah, no, that was.
You want them in that, like, in that, well, it's becoming a, okay.
Well, they looked at, oh, I don't know, he said DR was the one that came around and looked at everything? Tetro, oh, Tetro did, oh, right, DR.
One of them said they would, they would do a one, a one-time cleanup in the spring, is that?
No, that was DR.
Tetro did do an eighty-five per hour for cleanup.
Eighty dollars per hour for cleanup.
Yeah, spring and fall.
There's always cleanup.
Yeah, and then DR was six hundred dollars for the cleanup, and so I'm assuming they're both thinking it's about an eight-hour day, since six hundred divided by eighty is pretty close to it.
That's a, that's a long.
So then we gotta ask, is it, is it worth paying them to do the cleanup from all the brush, all the brush that's falling off the pine tree, or do you wanna pay the highway to do it? Either way, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of, from the heavy snow, there's a lot of branches that fallen off the big pine tree into the park.
They took the big stuff away, but they left all the little stuff, little, little stuff.
It's all still there.
I thought you took some, no, really? Oh, okay.
Well, I was getting ready to, and then another foot, no. I'm not paying attention. So I don't, I mean, I'm hap, I'm willing to do it, but.
Let's see, eighty dollars an hour versus?
Well, three times. Average.
Yeah, fifty dollars an hour, yeah, for both of you, yeah, probably an hour.
So our two choices are to have him do it, or have the town do it?
I'm happy to get the big stuff, and then maybe I can do the smaller stuff. And then some of those, some of those limbs are bigger, right? Yeah, I'm just taking chainsaw, probably smaller.
And so, whatever you don't get to, they'll do it at eighty bucks an hour, it sounds like, Tetro's will. Does everybody feel okay about that?
Everybody's okay about that.
Great. And then, Brandy, the next thing is the BLCT audit results.
Which I sent that by email to all of you.
How did that happen?
How did what happen?
The fine that we got.
Well, if we don't have contracts in place, they want a business card, certification of insurance, I have to check the department list. So if you do not have a contract set up with anybody who gets a ten ninety-nine, it's over a six hundred dollar threshold, that's what they're expecting me to show them.
So that, that happened?
If I do not have that in place, then you get fined.
And was there a specific case that they, or was there multiple, like, more than one, or?
It was, this had to do with FEMA.
Okay.
Yep, and because it goes through the accounting system, it's red flag for a ten ninety-nine. So if anybody who's on there that doesn't have a contract.
Oh, is this some of the people who worked on the town roads right after the flood? Okay, I remember that now, yep.
So this is other people other than the town, you know, this is?
Yes.
Other contractors that were hired to do things, but they weren't asked for their?
That's my, that, that's why I'm pushing so much that you have to do contracts.
But that happened, that people were hired, and, or did they just show up and help because it was a flood and?
I don't know what the circumstances were those two.
Oh, okay.
But the board, yeah, signed off on the bills, they, it was part of them doing stuff for the town, so, yeah.
I remember Tetro's.
It was the park cleanup, yeah.
So good to know.
So we did.
Contracts.
So we hired Tetro, that was like twenty-five hundred dollars, right, for that park cleanup?
Tetro?
I'm sorry, DR, I'm sorry, yes, DR.
DR, we already had a contract set up with him for mowing.
Yeah.
So it's not, yeah, when I do my ten ninety-nines, it's not, it's just bundled, so that wasn't.
So it wasn't that long?
It was, I, it was a couple of people who live locally that had volunteered to help out, but at a charge, and I actually can't remember the conversation, like, I don't remember approving it, although I'm sure we did, but I do remember signing off on the checks that went out to town for payment.
Seeing the payments and saying.
And then, and that's only for services, right? For instance, like, for purchasing like the sand screen or whatever, we don't, ten ninety-nine that person for?
Oh, yeah, they're gonna get ten ninety-nine, it's over a six hundred dollar threshold.
For a product, not, not?
Yes.
So when we buy a truck and stuff like that, that they?
No, that's a corporate, that's.
Yeah, they're corporations, so they. Okay. Well, we got a contract for that.
So like, yeah, all the mowing? So, yeah, I can print out who received a ten ninety-nine, but, yeah, things should be in contracts, anything over six hundred bucks, that's what BLCT is asking, requiring for me to show them.
Alright.
So what account does that payment come out of?
That's a good question. Out of the general fund, miscellaneous expense.
Oh, yeah.
That fine?
It wasn't budgeted.
I can't remember what it was, it was probably like three thousand, yeah, three grand, yeah. I mean, it was unusual, I wasn't there, but I'm assuming it was pretty unusual circumstances, like, we're trying to put the town back together, and like, going forward, that's probably not gonna happen as often, because.
Correct.
God willing.
Do you, do you think that point was brought up to BLCT, the point that this was directly after the flood, you don't think it would make a difference? Okay.
They're looking at as a liability, that's all they're looking at.
Okay.
They're covering us, they want us to cover our bases, so, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, there's no swing.
And we don't have any objections, maybe we move on to leave for surgery?
Yeah, so, so I've contacted, skip, Marcus Money has made it capable so that I can, I'll have my laptop that coincides with my printer, that I'll have at home periodically, I'll be checking emails. Robyn is my signer assistant, my only signer assistant, that AP or signing checks. Payroll, Pam is, we gotta do a refreshery, preferably not on a slackboard. I just need to train them, retrain them again when it's not so crazy, today was very hectic, but.
So Pam is gonna be able to do the payroll?
Payroll, but Robyn, again, Robyn is a minor signer, so she will cut the checks. Twelve weeks is the minimum that I will be, and I don't wanna say that I'm not, don't even try and contact me, cause that's not okay. But, yeah, there's gonna be some sedation moments that I'm just not gonna be able to.
How long do you think you'll actually be in the hospital?
Oh, no, I mean, they're hoping that I can leave the next day.
Whoa, really?
But I have to climb through stairs, and I have to walk down the hallway, so, we'll see, we'll see. So I'm hoping just.
So in your email, I couldn't tell if you were talking about twelve weeks before you can start PT and then twelve weeks more? Or are you thinking twelve weeks total?
I'm thinking in the long run, I want somebody to fill this position.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So, but now we're at the point where it's too late to train somebody.
Well, it's not too late to train, no.
Two weeks.
Right. But it's, it's, um, yeah. It's just repetitive. I mean, nobody's gonna get this job unless they, they've had frequency of government accounting. And, and NIMR, using NIMR. So, but it's trying to find somebody in this town that wants to be the treasurer, because it's an elective position. It, they can be appointed.
Right.
Um, to fill in.
You could hire, town could hire someone.
Right. And to carry out my term, which that's until twenty-six.
If you decide you can't come back.
I'm not.
Or you don't want to?
It's, it's, um, I need to behave on this one. This is my fourth back surgery. And I can't screw this up, so I'm not gonna push it. The other three surgeries were supposed to be twelve weeks as well, and I was back in the following week, just cause that's me.
So if we see you in the last best, we'll tell you to go home?
Pretty much.
Oh, you were held before?
Yeah.
I need to retrain my own brain and that's gonna be the hardest part, so.
I hope it all goes well. It sounds like we should maybe think about if, if, if nobody wants to step forward, um, in town, but think about. But I feel there's to try to hire someone.
Well, she's not, she's not resigning, yeah.
But I mean, even short-term.
It'll be out for a couple of weeks.
So Tom can do, uh, twice a month, he said, but that's not considering summer time. Um, he does bankrupt from home with three, so that's my second checking over my work, making sure everything's, but he does it remotely.
He said he could come in twice a week and do, you know, before the select board meetings and do these bills?
The warrants, yeah. The bills and warrants.
And the regrets he can do at home?
When it works at home, yeah. But it is gonna be additional work on Robin and Pam.
I guess what I meant is that maybe we should consider trying to hire somebody in the short-term.
Oh.
For, and I don't know whether, um, there's a way to look into that. It seems like a, they're big shoes to fill.
So for a small town that, that, um, yeah, nobody's jumping or knocking at the door to.
Right.
And notice Calis advertising for a treasurer. And Calis went, how long did they go for without a treasurer? I don't know how they did it.
They were lucky enough to get their old treasurer to come back for a year.
Oh.
And they sat on their hands for a year, and now she's, the year's expired, and they don't have anybody.
That's Sandra?
Yeah.
Sandra, yeah.
Yeah, she's really good.
Can I ask her if she'd be willing to take the short-term?
At Greensboro.
She might do that for twelve weeks.
Employee.
I'm not concerned.
Question, I have to ask her even if it was a part-time thing.
Just like a twelve-week, she, I, I'm pretty sure she doesn't want, I don't have anything long-term.
So I'm not even concerned with the short-term. I'm concerned with August when taxes, tax bills come out. That's when I'm concerned when the chaos comes.
Okay.
Um, I'm not even concerned with, I mean, literally, somebody could get by doing my job once a week to get payroll done and check in, but it's everyday stuff that the phone rings and questions. And it's easy, cause I've been there so long for me to find the answer, or I just know it in my head, but. I don't think it's fair to the town either. The meds that they're putting me on now, I literally can't remember stuff. And I don't think that's fair to the town. I screwed up two time sheets last week. Granted, I mean, I, I will fix them next Monday, but, yeah. So I'm not giving my full, so therefore I feel like, yeah.
So the people in town that we might know of, who you've probably already tapped into, like, all the lady out on Buck Lake Road, but she's got a full-time job, right? And then there's, who am I trying to think of? A new, uh, Lister. She's got a full-time job, plus she's a Lister. Bonnie?
Yep.
Didn't know she was an accountant.
Skip, can you see this one?
I could talk to Danielle.
That's a great idea.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah.
How about Evelyn?
Oh, she wouldn't.
She wouldn't?
Absolutely not.
No.
She's happily retired.
She doesn't get bored much in a while? No.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Well, Danielle would be perfect, but I don't know.
Never say never.
Well, if there's no objections, um, I hope the surgery goes well. Yeah.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah. With no objections, maybe we move on. Uh, is the Woodbury Fireman's Auxiliary, um, do we expect Paul to be here today?
No, me, just.
Oh, thank you, Rob. All right.
Fireman's Auxiliary, not the fire.
Sorry.
Let me tell us what the Fireman's Auxiliary is.
It's a fund that the Myers created way back in the seventies, and they do the Bessie Drennan exhibit.
Yep.
Down in Soprory Church, and what they do with the money that they raise, they give a five hundred dollar scholarship to a graduating Woodbury student, and they do up to four two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar scholarships for camps. Could be basketball, it could be.
Buckley.
Buckley.
And that's from the Bessie Drennan, which you're not gonna do anymore, right?
Well, where an office isn't going this year.
Um, and you own the fire, you own the postal office, right?
The postal office building.
Yeah.
And the area down here where the skating rink is, that's theirs. So what I would like to do is get the little footbridge replaced. That goes from the postal office over through to the skating rink or up here to the school.
So the auxiliary owns the, to land on this side of the bridge also?
Yeah.
Okay, oh. You got an estimate on that?
I've gotten one and I've got two more out there that I'm wanting to come in, and the one I have right now is around forty-three hundred dollars.
I see we're gonna need a bridge on the other side of the road too at some point, but to join two sections over our park, our two.
So what I'm here to ask for is to see if the town will be the financial officer?
The middleman.
For the.
But you have your own money and stuff. You must have checking accounts and stuff for the postal office. So if they won't give it to you as a nonprofit, that's interesting. Huh, cause I know the, the Woodbury Fund gives money to other nonprofits.
So that, we, as, you're asking, as a fiscal sponsor, our responsibilities are to the towns?
To pause it, turn around and cut a check to them.
Yeah, just really not much of anything.
And we've done that for the PTO.
And the fire department.
Our department, we do. Yep. Everything comes through us, but yeah, I can turn around and just cut them a check, so.
So it would go from the Woodbury Fund to the town and then to, into the auxiliary's?
Yes.
Account?
And then pay whoever does the work for it.
Crazy, who else?
I think motion that we do it.
Yeah, I'll second that.
No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes, so the town will be the fiscal sponsor for the Woodbury Department. And then, now it's time to just talk about, uh, the library trustee position.
Yep, um, so I'm speaking for Steven Murphy, who sent us an email, um, requesting, and we have done this before. Um, so I guess normally it would be the select board who would appoint new library trustees. And Steve is requesting that we bestow that power to the library trustees. To give, i- in this instance, I, he is not requesting it for every instance, I don't believe. But he's requesting that, um, right now they are trying to fill a position, um, and he's requesting that they be given the authority to approve somebody, which I think sounds good.
I, I think if it's our job to do that, we can, they can certainly look around and make a recommendation. But I don't think we should give them the authority to appoint people on their own board. That's kinda odd.
I guess, he sent some emails, which I read, um, briefly, but I believe we've already done it in the past.
To the library, giving them the, but we appointed the, the last person that needed to be appointed when they had a, we had, uh, an opening last year, we had like three people, and we chose one.
So if there are, so this person's already the role?
Uh, what are you asking?
They have somebody, is that what you're saying?
Do they have somebody?
I'm not sure if they already have somebody picked out or not, um.
It seemed for some reason like kind of time-sensitive, is that, did you get it?
It's like, it was really a long email, and I read it like really fast while I was trying to make breakfast.
It's just because, it's just because Terrence passed away. They wanna get that position filled.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So even if they, they get the person, they give you the name, you can still appoint at the next meeting.
But it's not like they have a. Right. Right. Yeah, I could, I could understand why they would, I mean, I would prefer that they look around and do the work of, of finding someone and make a recommendation, but I still think we should make the appointment.
So is, is the confusion that, and just one second, Mike, is, is the confusion that, um, Steve doesn't think, or the library doesn't think that they have the authority to go find that person to make a recommendation? And that they are assuming that we are going to find that person and therefore it's gonna take a long time? Because none of us are looking for that person?
That could very well be the case.
I don't, I didn't read it.
So maybe that's, we just need to get that clarification and go, get back to Steve and say.
Sure.
We're happy to appoint whoever you, we're gonna listen to your recommendation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'd make a motion that we tell them that, that they please go and see what you can find for someone and bring us some recommendation, and we'll make the appointment.
I don't even know if we need to make a motion for that. I think the town has to be, we just have to kind we ask Steve for, to, to make a recommendation for us.
Okay.
So, um, I know usually like in my experiences, like with the Woodbury Conservation Commission or other town committees, that usually the, and I have a feeling that because the trustees are elected positions, that if there is a space that needs to be filled, that it would be the select board that would make that appointment. And then we could check with BLCT about that, uh, which is a simple question, but. And usually the other committees, which are all appointed to begin with, um, they usually, in my experience, come up with a person and then make a recommendation to the select board to appoint that person. That's kind of, that's my experience with.
Didn't Steve give, provide some wordage about what the statute says? I thought he did.
He did, and had not memorized that.
So it sounds like we just asked Steve to bring us a recommendation and.
I think that sounds great.
Great. The recovery officers report. Skip?
We've been busy past couple of weeks. Uh, uploads to the FEMA grants portal. I uploaded category Z labor for voluntary labor that was completed at the, uh, town offices for the people who cleaned it up, you know, during the day after the flood. And that totaled, totaled eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Uh, uploads to the FEMA grants portal, uh, since we last met included Woodbury Rail Trail, North and South Parks, Little Quarry Road, and Blake Hill Road, which added material costs, labor costs, and equipment usage hours totaling twenty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars. What's left to upload are town highways twenty-three and twenty-four, those two mitigation projects. County road extension, Cabot Road, the speed radar sign that's still hanging around somewhere, town offices, and North Hattie Bell Road. So total essential elements of information documentation sent to FEMA as of April fifth totaled three-hundred-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-two dollars and eighty cents. So FEMA and the state of Vermont share total ninety-seven-point-eight percent. So Woodbury, right now with the money that's in grants portal, could expect reimbursement of three-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Woodbury's two-point-two percent share of that would be sixty-eight-hundred-nine dollars and six cents. So anyhow.
Two point what percent?
Uh, two point two percent. So that's looking pretty good. Uh, and the remaining projects totaled approximately forty-five thousand dollars that still have to go up there. But most of it is the county road extension, which will, I gave Michael some information on that, uh, before the meeting. So, uh, also on April third, I up, uploaded two contracts for engineering services for Highway twenty-three and, and twenty-four, permanent repairs. So we had a conference call with, with FEMA subsequent to that, and that set off alarm bells at FEMA. Cause they looked at these contracts and I, I looked at them too, cause they had given them to me. So these contracts are pretty concerning to FEMA, because there's no start date, there's no end date. There's, uh, one of the contracts, the project description is Town Highway twenty-three culvert replacement design services. And on Town Highway twenty-four, it's Town Highway twenty-four bridge replacement and design services. So they're, to FEMA, they're two separate projects, but yet they're going to do the same thing. They're gonna replace the bridges there. And whatever culvert work or whatever string work that has to be done, essentially, it's, it's the same project, but it's worded differently. So they were concerned that we're just gonna replace a culvert here and not replace a bridge. How are you gonna do that? You know, so they were concerned about that.
I did ask the engineer why the one says culvert, and I didn't know if it was the typo or something, but it, he, he was right. It was a culvert to begin with. That doesn't mean that it's gonna be a culvert when it's done.
Right, but they just raised the flag and, you know, they can, they can do that, and they do.
Yeah, they might do a box culvert or something like that.
Yeah, who knows, you know, those, I have no idea what they're gonna do. So, and, uh, so I sent an email, I think you, to you Diana, about why there's no start and complete date on this. Because what I'm looking at is the recovery offices to have these projects done by January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and.
But you just said we can get an extension.
Yeah, but however, I'll talk about that later. So Diana, you responded to me, there's some commitment for completing the work in the contracts.
Yeah.
So to me, that raises another issue. So if there's no commitment to complete the work, how are we gonna get this done? And, and you went on to say, what he said in the following email is the best I could get. And I don't know if this guy is slippery or just is too overwhelmed with work to confirm commitment date on it.
I can ask him for one.
That's why I thought if we had an end date from FEMA, we could use that to push things along, so. And, you know, FEMA raised a concern for both of these contracts.
They're both the same engineering firm, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's Nate.
He, he's done a lot of work for the town. I don't think he's slippery, but, um, I, I'm wondering if Skip should talk to Nate.
That's a good idea.
I think he'll understand if I tell him that FEMA, well, wants an end date.
And if he, if he isn't able to commit to an end date before the FEMA deadline, which I could understand might be the case. If he gives you an end date beyond the timeline, you can apply for an extension. Is that correct?
Yeah, I cannot apply for an extension until December of this year. For any projects that are going to not be completed by January fourteenth, I cannot write for an extension now. I have to wait thirty days before that end date, which is January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
What he did tell me was that he, um, plans to do the field work during the summer and have the engineering work done early fall, so we could go, but I can get, put something on.
So it's not gonna be completed, obviously, because construction.
He said, yeah, that we bidding in construction.
Are very tiny.
Late winter, or late fall.
So if it, if it would be of any use, uh, I could send you what FEMA is looking for in their contracts. And that's part of this two-hundred-and-thirty-two-page document. But it's broken down into like a five-slide presentation that the state of Vermont put on. But it's broken down into like a five-slide presentation that the state of Vermont put on. So it says state level federal procurement rules must be followed. No sole source contracts. If the work is over $250,000, it must be competitively bid. Engineering must also be put out to bid. So I don't know if that engineering was put out to bid or was it just a sole source contract?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I understood that FEMA wanted us to comply with our purchasing policy.
Well, we put that out to DeWolf.
No, not really, not really. What we got from DeWolf was they basically did us a favor by giving us a number to throw against the wall. And...
So what does that mean, Skip? We didn't... It sounds like we didn't put it up to bid, the engineering.
Yep, that's... We can get around that this time. Awards to responsible contractors. So the government and a website called SAM.gov, you can look for debarred or suspended contractors. So they want to be sure that none of the folks we hire have been debarred or suspended. And again, applicants' requests for proposals slash bids should provide clear and definitive scopes of work and monitoring requirements. Applicants should also obtain from bidders proof of insurance and bonding, copies of licenses, references, and financial records. And it goes on, blah, 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 blah. Types of contracts that they're accepting is lump sum contracts, unit price contracts, cost plus fixed fee. And the contracts that you have to avoid are time and material contracts. They don't want to see anything like that. And again, permanent work must be completed within 18 months. So the 18-month timeframe again ends January 14th, 2025. And it says for extenuating circumstances or project delays beyond your control, the state has authority to extend it for up to 30 months. So I can send you this if you think this might help. And I can send it to Brandy or Brandy's replacement if that might help. Because FEMA is very specific in their requirements.
I'd like to see that. But yeah, I mean, if you wanna call me, that'd be fine, but I'm also happy to explain if there are specific things like...
Well, the contract's already been signed.
That was my question. So that was a...
You know, the horse is out of the barn, it goes to contract, so...
And FEMA will allow this project to move forward even though they're not happy with that? Just going forward, we need to make sure that contracts are great?
Like with everything else we've been doing this year, we're trying to hurry things along. Get the best job done for the money.
So I talked with Andy Flag today, who is a state of Vermont emergency management contractor. And he then reiterated that we can't write for an extension. We can only write for those extensions for projects that aren't gonna meet the January 14th deadline in December. So I can see there'll be a couple of them, Town Highway 23, 24, Cabot Road Extension, maybe the Speed Radar sign.
Who should know about that?
Yeah, another ain't mine with that.
Because with a Speed Radar sign, seeing as it's not facing you as you're going south on 14, the sheriffs, if they write you a ticket, it won't hold up in court because you're not seeing that 40 mile an hour sign. You don't see a 40 mile an hour sign.
There's no sign at all.
Until you get down by my house.
Thanks, Robin. That's good to know.
But there still should be a 40 mile an hour sign, even if the...
There's just a warning sign there that you see when you're driving south. But the big one that was on the solar one is turned around. So when you're coming north, you have 40 miles on this side, you have 50 miles on this side. So if Alfie pulls out the pass me, he can only do 40 and I can do 50.
Does it seem very...
So with that, it's a little more complicated than I anticipated. One, it's very high off the ground. So you can't just reach up and put your sign. It's much higher than that.
You need a lift or something?
You need a lift or, yeah. I don't think it's even safe with a ladder, for that matter. And then there's also the traffic control issue, which means we have to hire certified flyers. So we can do that. It just hasn't happened because it's been winter. And I feel like plowing snow is probably a little more important than putting up speed signs on a state highway. But that should be, it should be the state highway. That's not, that's not our jurisdiction. That is, that is not town of Woodbury's jurisdiction to put speed limits on state highway.
Who did, who did the work last time?
Lafayette Construction. They did the work, but the 40... The 40 mile an hour sign, state sign, is there. It just has to be rotated 180 degrees so it faces north. So people going south can see it's 40 miles an hour. The radar sign itself is toast and that'll be removed when Alfie installs the other one.
So the 40 mile an hour sign you're talking about is on the same post as this somewhere? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it just needs to be rotated.
Why can't the state do that?
That's a state...
They should do that. In fact, they don't want the town to be doing that.
Oh, what? Yeah, okay.
So when we installed the original Speed Radar sign, we had to write through a permit for the state to work in there right away, to have a contractor working there right away. So we'll still have to do that.
Why can't they do that for us?
They probably would if we asked.
You think they'd charge us?
No. It's their responsibility.
It'd be too much trouble for us to charge us.
I'll reach out to the foreman down there and see. I don't know. It's probably sign division's different than the actual highway division, but...
Well, it's not like they have to... Yeah, I mean, the speed limit is already approved. It's not like...
Yeah, you just have to fix the sign.
Right. You know, Mike, they've got, they've got, the sign division has a bucket truck that they can put them in. And which they have, I mean, they have their setup for it. So I'll reach out to them and see if, see if they can help us in any way with that.
That would make a lot of sense.
You know, because we've got the new, the new sign. Still needs to be programmed, which we've tried, but we've not had success yet.
Do you think that'd be something that they would be expert in?
I don't know.
Oh, you can do it?
I think so.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of calling tech service and just helping walk us through it. Or walk Skip through it. I'm gonna pass that one to Skip. We tried. We didn't really do that, but it's just, it's above us, so... Yeah, I think that's a good thing to get, to get pushed forward and so we can, one, get it off the list of FEMA projects and also stop people from speeding.
Thanks, Skip.
There's more.
Okay, great.
Wait, there's more.
So we got a meeting with FEMA last week. And so FEMA has changed course now and how they, and the requirements for town documentation. Before last Thursday, the towns were compelled to send all their documentation to the FEMA grants portal, digitize all their documents, and send it up. And then from that information, FEMA would authorize the projects, obligate the monies. Then the monies would flow from FEMA to the state and then to the treasurer, whomever that's going to be. So they've changed the way they're doing it now. And the FEMA project manager that we're working with said it's analogous to how you do your taxes. So when you file your taxes, you assert that, you know, I paid this amount of tax, this amount of tax for this, and my deductions are like this, and you owe me X number of dollars. So, but you have to have backup for that. So he, again, he said it's analogous to that. But you need to have the documentation on hand when you get audited. And chances are you'll get audited. So we made the decision, Danielle and I, to continue as we're doing it, as the way we've been doing it, and upload the remaining five projects up into the grants portal. Because once they're in the grants portal, it's not FEMA's responsibility. They have all this stuff there. They're not gonna come to the back of the town and say, hey, where's this, where's that? Unless they need additional information. So with that, we're gonna continue with the other five projects that we have ongoing and just be done with it. You know, I think it's easier to do it that way because as the project, you know, gets on and on and on, you know, you may not have the same people doing this. You know, it may change to Robin or to Alfie or Michael.
You don't want me doing it.
And so, so these documents, where are they? So they're all in the FEMA grants portal. Also, they're backed up on an external hard drive. Danielle has established a Google Docs location, so it's up on the cloud. And it's also on a flash drive as well. Once we finish everything, all the documents will be on a flash drive at the town offices and on a Google Docs that's accessible by everyone.
Can you say again what those five projects are?
Somewhere here.
County Road Extension, two bridges.
Two bridges, here we go. Town Highways 23 and 24, those are mitigation projects. Cabot Road, speed signs, town office, Hattie Bell Road, and County Road Extension. So the Town Highway 23 and 24 mitigation projects we have now with a total cost of $1,400,000. That's just for, again, for places.
That's for the two of them or that's each?
Both of them.
Say, except that for the wall.
You know, when we were doing the site survey, now the folks with us doing the site survey were surprised that on Town Highway 23 is a class three road. Is that correct? And there was only one house there. And Town Highway 24, you know, is a driveway, a class four road and one house. So we're willing to spend X hundreds of thousands of dollars for two folks.
Well, when we first, when the, when we first got that million-dollar price, we were thinking, oh my God, if Woodbury has to pay 25% of that, that would be crazy. But now it looks like we won't have to pay 25%, but hopefully it'll be a lot less. I mean, the whole thing will be less.
Well, I'm hoping it will, especially if Alfie and crew can do it. Maybe.
Can we?
I don't know. You can.
It will depend on what the engineer says he wants.
But they still have to go out to bid because it's still gonna be...
It really does have to go out to bid.
So the answer is the group can't do it. That's the final answer. If it's gonna go out to bid, the town can't do it themselves. Town's not gonna bid against themselves.
Well, we can set a precedent and try it. See what happens.
So the money for the park over here, does that still in there for the...
The money for the park. Yeah, let's hope that uploaded.
Okay. That's still in there in case we need it for, in case the Vtrans grass doesn't grow.
No, that's, that's work that we've already done.
No, that's... But what we put in an estimate for repairing that in case what Vtrans... We didn't know Vtrans was gonna do such a good job cleaning everything up. So we put in an estimate for what it would cost if we want to replace those trees or replace that fence or anything. So that's still in there, right?
That is a proposal from, I believe, Windy Ridge?
Right, yeah.
That's in there. The proposal was there. Monies are not...
Might not, yeah, might not need it, but...
The proposal was in there. All right, what else? So we talked to Andy Flag today about mitigation projects and extensions. And he noted that extensions, again, are granted for good cause, up to additional 30 months for project completion. A letter asking for an extension must be on town letterhead and be received no later than December 14th, 2024 at Vermont Emergency Management. And the letter must make a compelling case for the extension. And when I told him about Town Highways 23 and 24 and said that they are mitigation projects, he says that's a perfect excuse.
That's why it's perfect?
Perfect. Because mitigation projects get drawn out because FEMA is much more involved than North Hattie Bell Road or speed signs or anything like that.
I mean, as far as mitigation, it would be good if the bridge was, you know, if they didn't blow out like they did the last couple of times.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, but it's not gonna, not gonna reduce the amount of water. It's just gonna make it flow easier. The work is down to the...
The engineer will make the spans wider. It'll be wider so that that allows more room for water, or room for more water.
It's still gonna be the same amount of water coming down. It just won't be disrupted by broken pieces of bridges and culverts running down the stream.
So next up in the project, we have another conference call on April 11th for FEMA. And we'll continue essential elements of information documentation for the remaining projects. Any questions, concerns?
Super glad you're doing it. Thank you. Danielle, too.
Yes.
Extend our thanks to her.
Well, I'll be talking with her.
And that's it? All right. Thank you. Alfie?
Well, I'm thinking my reports are gonna be pretty boring compared to the rest of them. So our new employee has started. He's working out great. Got him on the grader. He's just taking that off. He's just doing great. Can't say enough good things about him. We go from one extreme to another. I mean, less than a week ago, we had some half a snow. Today, we're thinking about mowing our lawns. It's just crazy.
The roads seem to be a little bit like...
They're firming up.
Yeah, something happened, right? Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, I think most of our frost is gone. There's still a few spots where it's shaded and whatnot. There's still a little lumpy, but we're in good shape. If we could just get some dry weather now to grade them, which we graded a bunch today. We were out on County Road today and Perimeter Meadow. But there's only so much you can do in one day. But now we're looking at four days of rain. So we're gonna be cleaning up trucks and hopefully taking plows off and putting them away.
Would the next four days be a good time for me to go up and look at you?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll be in the shop quite often, quite a bit.
I think it's my chance of snow showers on Saturday.
I don't wanna hear that one. It's true. It's true.
If I can get one truck with a plow on it.
We'll put them all away, right? But more so, just like the wings, we can take the wings off. If we do get anything, we can still plow with front plows. We already took the wing off the grader because it's kind of a nuisance to grade with the wing on there. It's hard to see and all that, so... I just ordered a load of chloride because it's inevitable we're gonna have dust. And, you know, it's already, I mean, a couple of days after snowstorm, we're already getting dry spots, you know, so... I've got that on its way. That's really all I've got to report. I have a couple of questions. One is not a question, it's just more for your information. April 29th to May 7th, I'm taking vacation. And I'll be out of town. I'm still reachable by cell phone or email or whatever. But I'll put a list together for the guys to work on while I'm gone, so activities will... So activities will continue. What's your thoughts about road postings? It's just a, just a question I need to have. The poster says May first. In the past, I've always taken them down and I thought they were, when the roads are hard enough. Getting some people asking if they can travel our roads and I have to tell them. I mean, now that it's warm, I can't use the, it's frozen, so. I don't, I don't know what, what your thoughts are.
Are the granite trucks still not running?
They've been running when it's froze.
They're up to pretty solid, right? I mean, where I've driven, I haven't really come into any mud lately, have you?
I guess I did. I would say maybe we leave it up to Alfie. His discretion was.
I agree.
Yeah, another May first, since another like three weeks, it's.
Yeah.
Should be scrambling.
I mean, in the past, in my past career, that's always been, you know, if the roads are right, you take the poster down. It's not, it's not, it's not a lot that they stay up the full term. I'm not quite ready to do it tomorrow or the next day. But I think, you know, because of this rain that's coming, if it was, if it was full sun for the next week, I would say, yeah, let's take it down. But with this rain, I'd rather keep them probably for another week or so. And we'll see what, what the roads are doing at that point. But they are firming up very well, I gotta say. They're doing very well for that. The other thing, I'm, I'm not real clear about work in the right way. Contractors are working in the right way. Do we have a form or something that they have to fill out and get permission?
Didn't we talk about that last year with the, the cable people? I mean, the CB fiber people?
Is that what you're referring to?
Like a.
Yeah, if somebody's digging a water line or power line under our road, there should be some sort of a permit.
Yeah.
I think there is a permit, some kind of permit for working the right way.
There isn't?
No, it's a driveway permit.
Like any, anybody can just go out and dig in a road?
No, they're.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I, I need clarification because.
No, there should be.
I think I've heard Greg talk about some sort of permit, but I just don't know.
Yeah, there is a driveway. I think the one I'm thinking of is a driveway permit.
Yeah, that's the most common one that.
Yeah, but.
Might have something in this.
I can look in our files at the office too and see if we've got anything there.
I think that only makes sense if you're going to dig up the town road that you need to apply for a permit.
Yeah, I mean, it's our infrastructure.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, anybody's doing it.
Hundred percent.
No oversight of it, I think.
And if Robin, I think if you can't find one, then we need to make one.
Okay.
And the other part of that is what if I'm the contractor? How do we want to deal with that? Or do you forbid it or what? I don't, I.
Just apply for permit.
Well, most instances, the homeowner would apply. For the, for the permit. I guess you can go either way.
So if it's a driveway, that's one thing. But if it's like going across the road to put a power line or something, that's more complicated, right? And then you have to close the road and notify the people and all that.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's where it gets a little bit more complicated.
I don't understand where, where the complication is.
In case I hired him personally.
Right.
To dig the trench for me.
Dig a road.
Right, you would still apply for the permit though.
Right, but see, he's a town employee, that's why.
But now working as a town employee in that case, right?
No, I'd be working on my own time.
Yeah, so I guess I don't understand the, the, where.
I mean, if.
Maybe I'm just really dense, but I'll see where it gets sticky.
I just want clarification because it's going to, it's going to happen, most likely it's going to happen. And I don't want there to be a problem, you know? If it, if it's too sticky, I'll just, I'll just turn away and not do it. But I would like to serve some of the residents of Woodbury.
We did ask, when he, when we hired him, we had this discussion about his business and not wanting to get in the way of, of his business. We didn't really talk about doing business in Woodbury.
My only thought on that, I guess, would be like, we wouldn't want to have you as the road commissioner sign off as, to allow you Alfie to do the digging. Like maybe the select board should sign off on it, just so it doesn't look like a conflict of interest. Uh, that's the only thing I can think of.
Probably go through the town clerk anyways.
Oh, okay.
I would think, I don't know.
I mean, if the town clerk is the apple, can't that?
Yeah, then there's a problem.
I think one thing we ran into in Worcester, and, and I think that this was resolved pretty quickly is there was concern about the road crews selling their work while they're on the job. And that would, I could see like being a little bit, you know, you see a problem and you roll up and you say, I can take care of that for you later.
Right.
And that, that was a little bit of an issue that got resolved pretty quickly. But it doesn't sound like that's the situation. Yeah.
No, I mean, no, I don't. I, I don't solicit myself. I mean, I've, I've, I've built a reputation, people know me already. And so I'm not doing that. But it, it does mix, you know what I mean? It does mix and that's where you got to be careful. I just don't want to be out there with my personal excavator digging up town road and then say, somebody says, well, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? Who are you working for? What, you know, ask all these questions. I want, I want it to be okay with the select board before that happens.
So since we all have like an assistant road commissioner, I guess we should be the ones that would, would approve that. When you come to us with a plan or the owner comes to us with a plan.
Or whoever was on the permit, like if it's the town clerk, I don't know who would be the person to sign it. I just think it shouldn't be you that signs the permit, just because it would look bad. But that's my only thought on it.
And all the building permits, who, who signs those? They don't all come from the select board, right?
No, the zoning administrator signs those.
So maybe it would be a.
What about the driveway permits? That's, is that a?
The garage did those.
No, but the select board signed the driveway permits.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think I remember doing that.
So if we find, maybe the select board then does sign those permits?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, thinking about the driveway permit. I don't remember seeing a.
We haven't had many, not many.
Select board signature on Dan's driveway permit.
Oh, it may not have, it may just have been the road crew or the road foreman, I'm pretty sure for, for access.
Yeah, it used to be the road foreman would sign it and then I thought that the select board did too.
No, I think, yeah.
File full of them in the drawer there.
Yeah, so I mean, that's partially why I'm bringing it up because it seems things are a little bit loose in that, in that department. And I just, I don't want to be the guy that's looked at like taking advantage because I'm not, I'm not interested in that.
It sounds like we have to tighten up our, our system. And then once that's tightened up, you shouldn't have any problem.
Is there anything in the new personnel policy that would address Alfie's concern?
I don't think we went there.
I think what's in a new personnel policy is sort of like working on town time on a different. I think there is a conflict of interest or conflict, some, something in there.
Yeah, there is a bunch of stuff about conflict of interest.
There is a section on that. It's more to do with the old policy had requested that town employees talk to the select board before taking on any other job. And we actually nixed that because it just felt like it was invasive of their own free time when they're not on the clock. So that's out of there. And there is a section about conflict of interest, but I don't know that it's like super relevant to this.
So I guess, does it sound like we'll just try to tighten up our system here?
Yeah, so we got to get a permit or find, find or create.
Hopefully we have one, and if we don't have one, we'll develop one. And then in the meantime, I guess just.
Yeah, it could be the, the, what we call a driveway permit could be a permit to do work within the right of way. I don't remember what the thing will tell you.
Would there be like a procedure? So like if you have to dig up the whole road and it's going to prevent cars from coming through for however long it's stuck up, is there a procedure in place for like notifying people X amount of days ahead of time or, you know, just making sure that people aren't stuck?
Well, you'd have to do front porch forum is probably the best way.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would do if I was closing the road for the highway crew to do a repair.
Yeah.
And that's what the towns tend to.
Let immediate neighbors know what's going on.
Yeah, fire department, emergency group.
Thanks, Danielle.
Unless there's questions, I think I'm good.
Roads are good?
They're rough right now, but.
Everybody goes slow, that's good.
They're getting better, they are getting much better.
Keeps the speed down, I like it. Moving on, it's the report on the Buck Lake Brook site visit, Michael, Alfie and Skip.
It was exhausting.
You were all there?
Yeah. See, so there was Ben Matthew, who is a stream permit person. There was Chris Sire, I think I C Y R, not quite sure how that is pronounced. He's our new district six rep, which were part of Vtrans District Six. And there was a fellow named Keith Friedland, who is the person that would be doing the H and H, the hydrology, hydraulic study. There was Skip, myself and Alfie. There was also a person, Lincoln Farasca from CVR PC. And Ron Rathburn was there. I think that was that's it. We looked at the two town highway twenty-three and twenty-four for the bridges. I had originally requested that Ben also kind of review the whole Buck Lake Brook as it goes through the village and up the hill to, to Carol Ray's for some stream mitigation work far into the future that the planning commission is, is thinking about. So it was kind of a double purpose visit focusing on the bridges and the FEMA work. And also perhaps some future mitigation work on the brook itself to try to keep the village from flooding in the future. So I think Skip, you were able to kind of get word from Keith or, sorry, my mouth throat is getting dry, about the, the H and H study that's needed. I mean, we tried to impress upon him that please do this as soon as you can.
Right, and he indicated he would, he would do it as soon as possible.
And that's Keith who?
Keith Friedland is his name. He is another, he's a Vtrans person. I'm not sure, I do have his official title at home, but I'll have it in my kit.
He, he's worked with FEMA before in other projects like this, so he knows what they're looking for. As soon as we get the H and H study, I'll send that to FEMA. And that's again, part of the town highway twenty-three and twenty-four mitigation projects. So that'll be just another document among many that they'll need for these two projects. That starts the ballroom, the H and H studies. From that, you can do an engineering study that I presume the town's going to hire an engineering firm to look at, you know, what exactly is required.
But now, isn't that what we did with those two contracts you were just looking at?
Not that I could see.
It's, they're not for engineering work?
Well, I don't know if they're going to recommend, you know, the type of bridge and the requirements for the bridge. I didn't see that.
Of course they are, that's what it's up to.
I think that's what I'm doing, yeah. He's going to, he's going to work off of the H and H studies.
Right.
Because the H and H is getting sized, the amount of water that's going to flow through there. And then he'll build a structure to consume that water.
So he needs that study before he can.
This is like, this is the first step, the H and H is the first step.
State's going to do that.
And that's why we stress, can we get this as soon as possible? So we can get it to our engineer and move forward with that.
And what did he think? I mean, I guess we're still going to have to apply for this extension no matter what. There's no way this is happening until spring at the earliest, right?
Well, unless, unless the engineer can get us a design midsummer. But he's already recommending late summer.
Yeah.
They're in fall.
And then we have to put it out to bid.
Then it has to go bid. And winter projects, I just tell you, they're not, it's not, you've seen what happened out here. It just, everything costs more, it takes longer. It's just not a good idea.
We like winter projects, don't we, Chris?
The reason why I was confused about, it says nothing in these contracts about bridges. It just prepare a final cost estimate and prepare final plans. So what, what are, what are in those plans?
Project Bridge Replacement TH twenty-four.
And if you look at the next one, culvert replacement TH twenty-four, same thing. Prepare plans, prepare final cost estimate.
But the, the preparing the plans, I think that is the engineering, right?
The existing site plan.
I think that is, yeah. The plans themselves are what, what, what we would provide to contractors to bid on.
But it doesn't really spell that out. It just drives me crazy to start. Prepare the final plans, structure the design for the bridge, you know, the supporting. You know, no more granularity, I think, in the contract.
Couldn't hurt. Couldn't hurt, for sure.
FEMA is rubbing off on you.
We don't have the kind of skills here to write our own contract. We'll use something that, that was a standard contract.
Sorry.
Some of the vagueness in those contracts might be because of, we don't have the H and H studies. So he doesn't really know, is it a culvert, is it a ridge? He doesn't know what he's designing at as far as the flow.
Well, yes, bridges have to go anyhow because they're not ours.
Correct. But the final fix could be a culvert, could be a box culvert.
Yeah, they're not a bridge, yeah.
You know, so he doesn't really know exactly what's going in until, until he gets the dimensions that the H and H is going to provide for us. Once we get back, then he can determine. And I think the town has some say in what we do too. I think we should work closely with him as far as what's decided, what goes in there, whether it's a box culvert, a pipe arch or a bridge. What, what it is, I think is, you know, we'll have to look at that by, you know, what size and what's available and what's most feasible for, for us.
All right, just looking at time, is it okay if we move on to Michael's? The next thing is the update on local mitigation plan?
So just a quick update, the RFP for contractor consultant to pretty much do the local hazard mitigation plan for the town with, with local, you know, town input, of course, is out. There's a due date of April eighteenth for, and we sent the RFP out, put it in the Times Argus. And then I sent it to a number of contractors that were, whose names were given to me by the Department of Public Safety. And we, I received three responses of people that were going to submit bids. I think there were seven people that I sent it out to, three of those people responded. And there may be others that just didn't respond to me. One person did respond telling me that they would not be able to do it. So a big question for the kind of committee that's formed at the moment is would the select board like us to review the bids and then recommend who to award the contract to? Or would, would you folks like to open up the bids? We don't know any of these contractors either, so.
I think you'll know like what you're looking for when you look at the contract, you should have some idea. If you know, like, what you're looking for, when you look at the contract, you should have some idea of what you're looking for. As far as compared to how much I know.
With the RFP, um, you know, from the grant agreement, there was a very detailed scope of work. That, um, so yeah, and that's what, and we did have criteria that we sent with the RFP, so, um, yeah, we do know what we're, what we're looking for, um, based on those criteria.
You think it would be nice to have that? What is it, a committee, a subcommittee?
Yeah, I'm calling it the, the, uh, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Executive Committee. We're basically doing the pre-work. Once the, uh, contract has been awarded, um, we definitely want more people involved.
And we did appoint that committee, right?
You did, yes.
You guys will have a more narrow focus on it, so I think it makes sense to have you look it over and make a recommendation to us.
Can you provide rationale for your recommendation, I presume?
Yes.
Sounds great to me.
Okay, um, and let's see, I know we'll be meeting tomorrow night actually to start, uh, work on, um, reviewing the contract from two thousand eighteen, so try to have that contract ready when we know who's.
Granular language, right?
This is a FEMA thing also, so. So, uh, we'll have you review us on that. Although, Norman Ek and his pretty, pretty granular too.
He is, yes.
So that's pretty much it on the local hazard mitigation plan. Things in the process. We're thinking it'll probably take about a year to do. And in the interim, um, the town is still good, um, for, with FEMA, if something were to happen like another flood, this summer. Um, however, our percentage, the town percentage would be a little bit less, that we would be, or a little bit more, that we, we would have to kick in on any projects. So hopefully there won't be any disasters until this is done. It's not much, it's like seven and a half percent, but when the price gets high, that's a fair amount. There, our present hazard mitigation plan ran out in February of this year. So, um, but the fact we're working on it, um, helps, yeah, with FEMA's consideration. So we do wanna get it done as quickly as possible.
You said April eighth was the end date for the?
April eighteenth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thanks, Chris. I'm leaving this coming Thursday.
That's when the bids are due?
That's when the bids are due, and we'll probably meet, um, shortly after that, cause I think the next select board meeting is the twenty, whatever the Monday is, I was gonna say the twenty-fifth, but that's.
Twenty-second?
Twenty.
Yeah, twenty-second, yeah.
Twenty-second, okay. So we'll probably try to meet before the select board meeting, so that we'll have something to recommend, so. And that's it, that's it for the afternoon.
Thank you. So, uh, the review and approve the application for a four thousand mini grant from the Municipal Energy Resilience Program. That's also, Michael?
Yes, um, we talked about it at, at the last select board meeting. And basically, um, what's needed now is for the select board to, um, review the application, um, which I did send to you all, um, last week at some point. And then approve it. We have till May twenty-first, so there's no rush, and we don't have to do that tonight. We're, you know, we are, it's already almost eight o'clock.
I don't remember what, seeing that application.
Okay, well, I did, I did send it.
Would it be possible for us to print it for the next meeting?
I have one copy printed right now, um, but yeah, um, yeah, I mean, you could have the town clerk print them out. Here's one printed copy if you would like. I didn't print all of the regular state stuff that's kind of boilerplate, um, cause, just because I didn't wanna crank out another twelve pages of stuff. But that's, that's the basic grant agreement and, and, um.
We just need to review it. We don't need to fill it out.
This is the grant that you were thinking could possibly give us a plan for both the town hall and the town office? This is the same?
Yeah, I was, at the last select board meeting, I was talking specifically about the town hall. But, um, you know, we're, we'll be giving a certain amount of money, and if we can stretch it a bit and include the town office, that would be great. That's what we'll, we'll try to do. It would basically be, uh, using the money to hire a consultant to do, you know, a much thorough audit of the town hall to figure out how we can make that thing usable year-round, for heating and insulating and, and whatever else we would need to do. And we could include in the application, um, we'd contact the, the town office also, and then see if the contractor feels that they can do that within the amount of money that, that they'll have to, to work with.
That, that's within the four thousand dollars?
That will be, yeah, we'd have to see if the contractor would be.
And we already have this thing from that, that Fitzgerald report for the, I'm talking about the town office.
The town office, yeah.
How long does that take, Anna?
Oh, a couple years.
Okay.
And I know, Randy, you originally applied for this, um, cause they had that on their records, and then I, I think it was just, at that point, they had all these requirements for reporting.
Yeah.
It's much simpler now, so, um, and I know you were inquiring for the town office, not the town hall, so.
Right, at the moment.
Well, just the, but the four, but the, excuse me if I get confused, but the four thousand dollar mini grant is for, um, I thought it was supposed to be for like forming an energy committee and having meetings and things like that.
Those are possibilities for that. But I did check with the person who oversees this grant, and I explained the, what the town was thinking of doing for the town hall. So that would be perfectly fine.
Okay, before you do that, I mean, we do have the report that we hired a historical preservation expert to do on the town hall too.
Did, did he consider the energy and?
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't an energy audit, but it was, it was a study of what, what we could do to make the building more usable, within the historic situation.
Right, yeah. So I, with this one, it's, it's, you know, it's a municipal energy resilience program, so they're gonna be more interested in heating, um, keeping that heat in the building, insulating and stuff like that. But the, whoever we hire will have to also be aware that it's a historical building.
So, Michael, before the next meeting, you just need us to have reviewed this and to have, make, make a motion that we approve it, or is that?
Yeah, and then you, you folks would be signing it.
Okay.
Yep, so, yeah, and we have made, till May twenty-first, so.
So we can make sure that's on the next agenda?
Good idea.
Thanks, Michael.
And this is, sorry, say one more thing. Is this the planning commission that's doing, talking on this, or?
Yeah.
Is there gonna be?
We'll oversee it.
So it seems is that we have some appointments to make?
Yeah, I did get a couple of approvals. Uh, Kim Silk agreed to be the pound keeper again and the dangerous buildings officer. And I believe Michael Gray said you were willing to join the transportation advisory committee.
If no one else was stepping up to it, and so I, I would prefer that you still try to find someone. I'm, I'm kinda booked pretty tight here.
I bet.
It, it is just a once a month meeting. It's more just advising, it's an advisory role that CVR PC does for V Trans in their different projects, but, but I, you know, maybe I can convince somebody on the planning commission to, to step up.
Do you want us to hold off on appointing you then, and?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I will do it if, if, you know, if nobody else will, I will do it.
Thank you for being willing.
We do have, uh, a young lady who's interested in being the town health officer, and I've been planning to get together with her to pass along the town officer manual that was in that box of wonderful stuff that you left at the town office.
I have that visually too.
Her husband came in and picked one up today.
What?
Her husband came in and picked one up today.
Picked one up, one what, Dugan's one? The recent one.
The health officer book?
Yeah, they've got another one? It's great if you do.
It, I printed it off the health department website.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah, okay. Oh, good, cause see, she was saying they did, they had a problem getting there to the office to pick it up. So I said, just come to my house. They looked right up the road, but.
That was nice before they had the snowstorm, because they called down to the office.
So anyways, hopefully, okay, good. So she, I went through that book, and there's really not a whole lot that the health officer can do. Has, has jurisdiction over, unless, not just because somebody doesn't have adequate sewage disposal, but whether that inadequate sewage disposal is affecting somebody else or the public. So it's not as scary. I mean, there's a, a lot of landlord stuff. We don't have a lot of that here, but, you know, asbestos and lead paint and water supplies and things like that. We don't have a lot of rental properties in town, so that doesn't happen too often.
I was involved in the default select board chair role, Chris.
Yeah, no, that's me.
In a landlord situation. But fortunately, our neighbor, the health officer in Callas, um, assisted me with that. And basically, I just watched what he did.
So hopefully, when she reads that, she'll realize that there's nothing to be real scared of. I'm not sure what she does for work, but I think she's some kind of a social worker, maybe. So we still don't have a, uh, animal control officer. We don't have someone who wants to be the rep to the CB Solid Waste Management District. We, I forgot to write this, but HCTV, Hardwood Community TV would probably welcome a, a board member from our town. The town energy coordinator, we've wanted one for a long time. And I did reach out for the Hardwood Woodbury Rail Trail Committee to have, um, someone basically bring that committee back to life. Peter, and I don't remember his last name.
Alberston, or I don't know.
Yeah, Alberston. He was interested. He responded to that email that I sent out, and he is interested in, and I don't know if he actually lives here. I don't think he does, but anyways, I was hoping, Lizzie, that you might say that you wanted to.
I am like so, I'm scared to this, sorry.
I'll make a phone call to Eric again, and then you send it to him.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and see if I can twist his arm.
Okay.
Um, is, the, the other question I had, is it possible that we send, make another post on front porch forum that these are positions that we're still looking for? I mean, I, I would think that a lot of folks in town have no idea that these, that, that we haven't filled these. And maybe if we just put a.
You mean they don't, we're all watch HCTV?
I don't think they do. But, um, maybe just something like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll work on that.
And then maybe we'll get some, some interest. So I guess I would entertain a motion to appoint Kim Silk, uh, pound keeper and dangerous buildings officer. So moved?
So moved.
Discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Kim Silk is now the pound keeper and dangerous buildings officer.
Do you have Pam do those letters?
That's what I have to do them up tomorrow. Thank you.
Uh, other select board business to discuss and adopt rules of procedure. So we went through that last time, and we decided we would kind of adhere to the small boards, um.
I had a, I had a, um, problem, a technical problem, and lost all of my Woodbury files last week.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, and so I've been trying to catch up, um.
Do I table this till next, next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, take these, I had this other one basically too, from a pile of white field that I thought was interesting. And I tried to look at them side by side, but I really didn't do that yet. And I also couldn't find this to use as a shell, so that means I'll have to, whenever I need something.
Yeah, I have one marked, um, this one.
Yeah.
Um, and I now can't remember, I think.
Most of that.
Most of it, we had gone with what I circled, but I can't remember if there was any that we didn't.
I might have touched up on you this week.
Feel free to look if you want to.
I feel like I went through this before.
Oh, yeah. We did really briefly last night on the way to, uh,
Thank you.
On the way out of the meeting.
Scott, thank you.
Sent in. It's, it's kind of like FEMA has also infiltrated V Trans, so they can't just infiltrate V Trans. FEMA's everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I see that.
So there's a form.
But anyways, this is like, this is like.
Sure, yeah.
From like, from two thousand sixteen.
Project things.
And this one, maybe kind of.
Change of this year. Conclusion of discussion of each agenda. So I think that the last time. Maybe you had the same thing, the same notes. We went through this.
Yeah.
Liz's copy.
And I remember the.
And, um.
Where, where there was a choice of do or don't, you know.
Right, and then I think that the only, we went with everything that Liz suggested and fixed up. We changed. At the conclusion of discussion of each agenda, but before any action is taken, the public body at each meeting, there may be, uh, five minutes afforded for open public comment.
Yeah, really.
This is the only one that, you know, we went through in, um, page four. Last page. And at the top, number two.
Okay, okay. Why is it number two? Oh, it's that section. Okay, we said what there?
We said that, um, at the conclusion of discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, and that, uh, by majority vote, the by may increase the time for open public comment. So here, majority.
Majority vote.
And then, um, and that there may be a five minutes afforded for open, that, uh, but before any public action is taken by the public body at each meeting, there may be eight, five minutes afforded for open public comment.
Is that on here somewhere?
It's right here. We, we entered the number.
Okay, okay, five minutes. Okay, well, I'll continue trying to find this on the LCT. You know, it's really, you have to sign on there, and I don't have a problem signing up, but then when I, I can't find stuff, it's really hard to find stuff. I don't even know where it's on this, but.
So we're gonna table that until next meeting. Um, and then, uh, apparently we are to discuss the need for a tax map update.
Yeah, the, uh, Lister was, um, approached by a company that does tax maps update. And we haven't had our tax maps updated for a long time. It's probably been seven or eight years. They were done by the Regional Planning Commission, um, and they haven't been updated. They just update them by basically writing on the paper maps. So updating them is not a bad idea. Uh, I'm gonna have to get back to the person who called, Ron, and find out what he's talking about, you know, some kind of proposal for how much money we're talking. Now, the, uh, our tax department, uh, representative who helps the Listers, uh, she said that, that money for that can be taken out of the Lister's Education Fund, which is, which is a fund that very rarely gets any use. It's, uh, right now, it's got Lister's Education Fund, it's got like, I can't really tell if it's got.
Where do you find this?
On the last page.
Last page.
Ten thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars in it. I don't think it gets used. I mean, the Listers are going to do, all do a two-day training in the near future. I suppose their hourly wages could come out of that. But anyways, if the money's there and we can use it, that's probably worth looking into, but for now, it's just a mention of something to.
Keep an eye out for it?
Yeah.
In what way would they be updated? Like, would it just be the information on the map itself that gets updated, or, like the map lines, obviously the property parcel boundaries won't change.
Right, yeah, they, there's not much that can be done with those, but, uh, unless they find problems. But there are like subdivisions that might have happened, and the Listers have been going, just going down and putting a line on the map, which is really not survey worthy, but it's.
Or somebody could have offered you a buy-in property, so then it's a bigger lot than two smaller lots.
Yeah, yeah, and there could be subdivisions that have happened in, since the, uh.
So this would just update all that stuff?
Yeah.
When was the last time they were updated?
Boy. I'm thinking two thousand seventeen, maybe? I don't know, we got the, the paper. I don't know, we've got the, the paper maps over there on the table in the office.
And this isn't something that will automatically happen when the reappraisal happens, right?
No, but it would, but if we have that, that would help the reappraisal.
Okay.
So you're gonna reach out to the person who suggested it? Okay, great, thanks.
Just a follow-up.
And I think the next item is an executive session for personnel.
I'm not sure we need one.
I think we do, yeah.
And the Select Board, I think, would like to invite Alfie.
Okay, okay, so I'll make a motion that we go into executive session now. It's 8:10. Number 212, Open Meeting Law, number 1BFA 313A3, guarding appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee. And we're gonna invite Alfie to stay.